Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, February 10th already. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. I'd like to ask you to join us in a moment of silence and reflection in honor of former employees, Ms. Dorothy Kelly, Secretary at Rochambeau, 1970 to 1992; and Ms. Joan Sanger, Assistant in Arts and General Education Program, 1979 to 1996. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll move into some brief announcements. I'd like to start off with just a couple of things. Many of us, a few of us, went to see Shrek Charlie on Saturday.
Friday.
Friday. And the rest of us on, yeah, the rest of us on Sunday. I could not, I cannot say more about our students, about the stage crew, advisor Ms. Sabrina Doolittle, or about our pit conductor, Ms. Kathy Davis. It was, it was, it was phenomenal. I am sure that we are going to have an Oscar winner out of that bunch. The singing, the acting, the stage props, the movement, yeah.
Dancing.
The movement between scenes, the dancing, the choreography, the overall joy that these kids had in this play was phenomenal. And, and, you know, I look at Shrek a little different, and I'm sure we all do, because it's relevant for our time that we live in. And that is the thing that was really pervasive, especially at the end. I am who I am. Accept me as I am.
And don't judge people before you do them, right?
Correct, correct. So I just have to say that it was phenomenal, and I just want to give a shout out to everyone involved. The auditorium was packed as well, and I'm sure it was packed every night. So I just wanted to say that. Also, I got to see the swim and dive team. They're at their swimming sectionals today. I saw some of the divisional diving, and I believe we placed there. We had a third place. I'm getting it good, right? I don't, I don't have the results. I have no results from sectionals presently, but I'm really impressed with our swim team who won, who won divisionals as well. So I just wanted to give a congratulations and a shout out to them. And thanks, you know, the swimming pool is awesome. Those starting blocks are state of the art. Those are the blocks that I see at some of the other schools, but not all. So we are certainly ahead of the game. So I just want to say, you know, thank you as well, you know, to Frank, who's been a really good facilities manager.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll mention a few things quickly. So a number of us were at the Martin Luther King Breakfast to benefit the Slater Center, and we got to hear an inspiring speech by the President of Westchester Community College. Strategic planning, we had a review just to look at sort of goals and progress toward goals so that process will continue. The Equity Committee met as well, and we're making good progress with that and looking forward to another meeting later in February. I attended the high school PTA meeting, which featured a panel on organization and study skills near and dear to many parents' hearts, and also the special ed coffee talk, which I know parents really truly appreciate, and being able to air their concerns. And also, I mean, we hear a lot of really great things also about, you know, special education in our district, so.
And each time I attend one of those meetings, the group seems to grow. And Ms. Algarten, thank you for taking the time to meet with those parents, but also to give them an opportunity to speak to each other so that they know that they're not alone, that they have other parents out there with the same concerns that they can speak with.
Really quickly, I just, two things. Eastview International Night was great, a lot of fun. And Reading Night at Post Road, it's so much fun. I didn't wear my pajamas. I didn't wear my pajamas, but I read this great book about a giraffe, about a giraffe that is embarrassed about the length of its neck. It was a great book, you know, so.
And the only other thing I'll mention is that, as always, you know, I'm always happy to be at our PTA Council. I always tell them, and I always say very publicly that there's no one better than our PTAs or our PTA Council. No one. Any other? Very good. Okay. So, any public participation tonight? Oh, let me.
I know. We're not going to.
It's not on the agenda.
You've done it on purpose, like to keep everybody in your toes.
So, 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 um, thank you. Okay, the board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum time limit of 25 minutes. Please, please share subjects of a more personal nature with the administration. They will be happy to reach out to you afterwards.
Thanks. Christine McMat, and I'm here representing the WPTA. And I just wanted to thank the WPTA, especially Dr. Ricka. The WPTA would like to thank Dr. Ricka and Frank Stefanelle for supporting our efforts to secure $15,000 worth of books for our students and teachers. We hope that many more financial donations made by the WPTA, NICID, and AFT via First Books. We're looking forward to celebrating Public School Week from the 24th of February to the 28th and kicking off the Census Awareness Program on the 31st of March with the district. We are also really proud of our Super Bowls that we had at some of our schools, and we look forward to donating the food to our pantries. I know Post Road alone, we raised, we had 28,000, 2,800,000 would have been better, 2,800 cans for our food pantry that we added to our food pantry, and it really does look like a store, and people have been using it. And it's so wonderful, because no one should ever not have food. So, thank you for your support, as always.
Thank you. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Anymore, anymore?
No, next month.
Thank you, okay. We're going to hold you, we're going to hold you to that.
Yeah, 28,000.
Is there any, will there be any other public participation? Okay, next we'll go into the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Church Street. Church Street wanted to come out because they wanted to participate in the instructional budget presentation. I really would like to thank the WPTA as well. Truth be told, Mr. Stefanelle and I really were riding the coattails of the WPTA's efforts to bring books for our children, and this is really going to be an amazing opportunity for our kids. We talked about being able to supply books to our children and their families when they participate in the upcoming census. Very important that everybody, where's the camera, John? Everybody participate in the census. And then afterwards, of course, we hope to even have books to be able to perhaps open up book pantries for parents and children to be able to come and get some fun books as well. So thank you very much. I also need to just draw attention to today's senior day, and we had a nice big win this afternoon over at the high school against Peekskill, which was great, boys' basketball. And also, we have three wrestlers who are going to be representing, yeah, I think you might know one, right? We have three wrestlers who are going to be representing the district in the sections this weekend, and we're very excited for that and certainly rooting for our Tigers. We really had another outstanding athletic season this winter. It's hard to imagine that spring sport's going to be starting up. But lots of really great things to be proud of, and congratulations to our student athletes. The 2020-2021 calendar is on the agenda this evening. Thanks to all of our community members and stakeholders who participated in reviewing this and making sure that we had the appropriate number of vacation, I mean, school days. I'm sorry, as I mentioned, we couldn't, we couldn't get our way to a full two-week recess, winter recess. However, it's a great calendar, and you can see that, and that was the big question, when are we coming back? And the children will be coming back after the holidays. So hopefully that's helpful to our families as well. We are really, really proud to students. We had a number of students participate, but two students were winners this weekend at Science Research. We had Amanda Monteschain, she's 11th grader, took second place in cellular molecular biology. And we also had Shannon Rogers, who's in 12th grade, took first place in behavior. Shannon is actually going to go and participate in the larger competition later in the summer with her mentor, who is also a doctor. Congratulations to all the participants, certainly, though, congratulations to Shannon and Amanda, as well as their mentors. It's a wonderful program. We're so proud of our students each year as they participate. And there's our winners. Now, this is not the budget, right? That's really important. This is the instruction, the proposed instructional budget, but there still is a long way to go. There's a lot that we still need to hammer out. Of course, the only budget that we've seen at the state level so far is the executive budget. We still need to wait for the legislature to come and work together with the governor's office to put out the one-house budget. And in that interim time, we still need to plan. So this evening, as we do, is we follow, we follow our plan here in the district, and we are fortunate to have Dr. Hand, who's going to kick us off and take us through the instructional portion of the budget, as well as Ms. Algarten, who will then pick up on the People's Services portion of the presentation. Really important, all this information is available on the district's website through Board Docs. And any questions that you may have, or any questions that anyone in the community may have about the budget or the budget process, we are always here to answer questions and look forward to anything that you may have to add to the process. Thanks, Dr. Hand.
Okay, here we go. Okay, so important to note, as Dr. Ricka had just said, I just want to say that this evening's presentation is part of a much larger discussion, and it's, the larger discussion is the creation and the presentation of the 2020-21 preliminary budget that will be presented in proceedings from the superintendent on March 9th. And more importantly, we'd really like to start by recognizing the dedication and the commitment of our administrative team, the faculty and the staff who have helped to shape the long-range plan and our vision for the future. So thank you to everybody that was involved in this presentation. We're going to start with the pre-kindergarten program and go up to grade 12, so it's going to be long, but we're going to try to be very concise. Our pre-K program continues to thrive. Next year, we plan to continue the implementation of the Pyramid Model for emotional wellness, expand it to include all pre-K classes, and partner with external coaches to provide professional learning opportunities for our pre-K administrators and teachers on implementing and evaluating the Pyramid Model. This will be included in our existing budget and will require no increase in funding. We are requesting the addition of a .4 FTE clerical support for the program, which will be grant-funded via the pre-K and Title I budgets. The clerical support will also assist with Title I responsibilities, and they cross over all elementary schools as well as the middle schools. In English Language Arts K6, we are continuing the rollout/roll-up of the TC Units of Study for Reading and Writing in grades four and five. We are also continuing the K through 5 implementation of benchmark assessments by adding classrooms and/or grade levels so that there is consistency within schools and across grade levels within a school. We will be continuing to develop culturally responsive classroom libraries in English and Spanish as needed at the elementary level. And flexible seating at the middle school level has enhanced the learning experience of our students. Finally, we will be planning and implementing professional development for teachers to support, in support of strengthening our tiered approach to intervention, and all this is going, is ongoing work and will be accomplished using our existing budget with no increase in funding. English Language Arts K through 12. Continuing with English Language Arts, we are currently conducting a K through 12 committee review of our writing curriculum. We are looking forward to the recommendations from the committee and are prepared to plan and implement curriculum work and professional learning opportunities for our teachers in response to any recommendations. At the middle and high school levels, we are broadening our text selection for whole class and independent reading so that our resources are inclusive and representative of our diverse student population. We will continue to partner with consultants to conduct Shakespeare residencies at Highlands and White Plains High School, and we already have a residency in place at Eastview. Finally, we will be expanding opportunities for honors-level work and plan to offer an honors option in English nine-regents level courses. This will be in addition to honors sections in grade nine so that incoming high school students have increased opportunities to partake in honors-level coursework. These enhancements will be built into the existing budget with no increase. Dual language. In dual language, we have committed to a 50-50 model in K through 5 and need to ensure that the teachers have the resources available in English and Spanish. We will be continuing to plan professional learning opportunities for our elementary and middle school dual-language teachers by partnering with the Center for Implied Linguistics, BOCs, and Colleges and Universities. These resources and professional development opportunities will be funded through the existing budget with no increase. As we continue to expand the dual-language program to Church Street, right now it's a K through 2 program, and next year we will be adding grade 3 and then adding grade 4 and 5 the following two years. We are requesting the addition of a 1.0 full-time dual-language instructional coach. This position will provide support to the K through 5 dual-language teachers at Church Street School .5 and Eastview Middle School .5 for the dual-language content area teachers, as well as the Spanish-language arts teachers. Currently, we have a 1.0 full-time dual-language instructional coach who has been doing amazing work with the teachers at Post Road in George Washington and has supported the Church Street expansion. However, as the program continues to grow through the grades at Church Street, along with the need to provide support to the teachers at Eastview, we are in need of the additional coach. For World Languages in English as a New Language, 7 through 12. In World Languages, we are requesting to expand American Sign Language to the third level at White Plains High School and to add American Sign Language 1 to the course offerings at Rochambeau. This would require the addition of .4 FTE, of .4 full-time equivalent, for .2 at White Plains High School and .2 at Rochambeau. At the middle school level, we have two classes of Mandarin with 44 students in total. We anticipate the need to support two sections of Mandarin 2A at the high school and are projecting the need for an additional .2 full-time equivalent in Mandarin. Existing budget with no increase will be used to enhance the experience of newcomers and world-language students at Highlands and White Plains High School with curriculum-aligned field trips so that they can grow their experiential knowledge and develop their language skills. The American Sign Language 3 is a new course proposed at the high school. The .4 on the slide includes the .2 for the high school position, as well as the .2 for the Rochambeau position, with Rochambeau offering not American Sign Language 3, but American Sign Language 1, because that will be the first introduction to that course. Social Studies K through 12. In Social Studies, we will, we will be providing targeted professional learning opportunities to the elementary, middle, and high school teachers. Partnering with organizations such as Facing History in Ourselves, Living History, Generation Citizen, and the Gilder Lehman Institute of American History, we will enhance the teaching and learning experiences of our teachers and students. We will be, we will be continuing to build a collection of high-quality instructional resources and increase opportunities for civic engagement in all grade levels in a developmentally appropriate and meaningful way. In addition, we will be expanding opportunities for honors-level work and plan to offer an honors-level option in Global One Regents-level courses. This will be in addition to the honors sections in Global One so that incoming high school students have increased opportunities to partake in honors-level coursework. Another proposed addition to the Social Studies Department is a new course that focuses on Latin American and Latinx studies. It is an elective for students in 11th and 12th grade who are interested in exploring the complexities of Latin American culture and its historic ties to the United States. This course will satisfy the semester government course that is mandated by the New York State Department of Education as a requirement for graduation and will be funded through the existing budget with no increase. Mathematics K through 12. Our focus on strengthening content knowledge and building strong conceptual understanding in mathematics will be supported with ongoing content-based professional development for our K through 5 teachers. We will continue to support the implementation of high-quality resources, including the Envision Math 2020 program in grades K through 5 and the Big Ideas Math program in grades 6 to 11. Partnering with Penn State University, we have been working with a math consultant who has focused on scaffolding instruction at the middle school level. We will continue this work at the middle school level and expand it to include the high school math teachers next year. The resources and professional learning opportunities and support will be covered by existing budget with no increase. Science and Engineering K through 12. In science, at the elementary level, we will be focused on providing professional development professional learning opportunities to our teachers in relation to the New York State science learning standards. We will also be reviewing our elementary curriculum to determine any gaps that may need to be addressed as we align our curriculum to meet the demands of the new standards. At Highlands, we will be partnering with the Children's Environmental Literacy Foundation to bring citizen science to our 7th grade students. Due to an increased interest at the, at the high school for Project Lead the Way Introduction to Engineering Design and Project Lead the Way Civil Engineering and Architecture, as well as physics, we are requesting a .4 position to meet the increasing demand for these courses. We had shared staff between science and Project Lead the Way, and now that we're increasing the interest in physics, which is great, and we're also increasing the interest in engineering, which is also great, we need more teachers to be able to handle that increase. We will also be conducting a committee review of textbooks and instructional resources for biology and earth science. The purchase of these resources will be included in our existing budget. There will be no increase. June Regents. This year, the physics regents is scheduled on Wednesday afternoon, and the chemistry regents is scheduled on Thursday morning. Graduation is also scheduled on Thursday. We will need to score regents prior to graduation as rating day is on Friday. So we're asking for a budget line so that we can pay teachers to score the regents outside of the school day. There is also request for a budget line to pay science research chaperones for their work on evenings and weekends, and a budget line to cover science research competition fees for our students. They are actually required, you know, parts of the class. We also have some new course proposals in science. The Science Department is proposing two new courses for next year. The first is Environmental Sustainability and Human Impact. Exciting. It is a full-year elective that will be offered to students in grades 10 through 12. It will be project-based, it will be a project-based course, incorporating student research, lab activities, case studies, and debate, and will be designed to bring awareness regarding global climate changes, dynamic changes with the Earth's many ecosystems, ecosystems, and how human impact has played a significant role in our global climate shift. The addition of this course will not require any increase in budget. The second course that the Science Department is proposing is a super forensics course. We've actually been waiting for this course. You have to wait to be trained and be accepted through Syracuse University. This is a dual enrollment course with Syracuse University as a partner for college credit. This course would run in place of a current honors forensic course. This course will focus on the application of scientific methods and techniques to crime and law. With an emphasis placed on the techniques used in evaluating physical evidence, the course will be offered to students in grades 10 through 12 as an elective. The addition of this course will not require any increase to the budget. The Engineering Department is proposing two new courses for the next year. Industrial Design will be the first in the sequence of two courses. It will provide more opportunities and options for students taking half-year elective courses. Industrial Design will be offered to students in grades 9 through 12 as an elective. The course will use a hands-on approach to learning and applying the engineering design process with a focus on the fundamental skills in measuring, drawing, project research, and materials processes, practicing along with the emphasis on the safe use of a variety of tools to shape different materials, including woods and plastics. The addition of this course will not require an increase to the budget. The second course in this sequence will be Advanced Industrial Design and Fabrication. Again, this would be a half-year elective course offered to students in grades 9 through 12. It would be a continuation and expansion of the materials processing concepts introduced in the industrial design course, focusing on more complex projects and modifying plans to incorporate custom fabrications. The addition of this course will not require any increase to the budget. These two course, this two-course sequence will be offered as a replacement to construction systems and manufacturing. And in case anybody needs to know, CNC is Computer Numerical Control. Instructional Technology. In the Instructional Technology Department, we will continue to focus on increasing students' engagement and achievement through the integration of technology, ensure equitable access to high-quality digital resources and standards-based, technology-rich learning experiences, such as applications that supplement and enhance learning, the digital audiobooks that we have through Sora and Tales2Go, along with multiple language databases. Expand the use of the learning management system and support the use of learning tools that support problem solving and collaboration, all within the existing budget, no increase. Instructional Technology continued, continue to develop digital citizenship and literacy skills through authentic learning activities in classrooms, library media centers, and computer labs. Provide professional learning to ensure that educators are proficient on the integration of learning technologies and utilizing our in-house experts, partner with BOCs and consultants when needed, and utilizing online applications to provide flexible learning opportunities to our teachers. I just want to emphasize how important it is, because our expert teachers are really working hard to, to work and support their fellow teachers. So I want to give them a shout out, and that's all within existing budget and no increase to the budget. The Computer Pathway, the Computer Science Pathway, 9 through 12. New York State actually has a K through 12 Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards now in draft form, so we are carefully watching their adoption in the near future. At White Plains High School, the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Pathway 9 through 12 is a continuation of the work that we started two years ago and now includes Computer Science Essentials and Computer Science Principles. There is no increase to the budget for the 2020-2021 school year. Fine Arts. In the Fine Arts Department, the focus is on continuing to refine and develop the robust arts program K through 12. There is a request to increase a 1.0 music teacher to continue building the music technology courses at White Plains High School for a .4 and accommodate the additional sections of band and band lessons needed at Highlands for a .6. With this addition, the high school would be able to offer four more sections of piano and/or music technology for a total of 10 sections, dependent on student interest. At Highlands, the band has grown over years without adding staff, so the .6 would meet the additional needs of that program. There is also a request for, to, for an increase of a .2 art teacher. As the position that we currently have is a .8, and the .2 could make that a full-time position. The .8 currently works across three school buildings, which is not ideal, and the addition of the .2 FTE would allow more consistency in scheduling across the elementary schools and would also alleviate the limitations that sharing staff across buildings puts on scheduling and individual building. There are also plans to support a music technology lab at Rochambeau and expand the music course options available to Rochambeau students. This will be covered by the existing budget with no increase. Physical Education and Health, K through 12. In physical education, we are partnering with Playworks to plan and implement professional learning opportunities for recess monitors and teaching assistants to enhance the recess experience at the elementary level. We have implemented physical activity throughout the day to improve student wellness and meet the mandates of New York State requirements. We're going to build upon current instruction in mindfulness, stress reduction, and mental and emotional health. We're going to bring back yoga to the high school as a PE offering, and we will continue to build connections with the community and outside organizations to, to further student physical literacy knowledge and their experiences. physical literacy knowledge and their experiences. And finally, strategically integrate technology and supportive physical education and fitness, all within the existing budget, no increases. District-wide College Readiness, Avid. For Avid, the second cohort will now reach the 12th grade, so there is a request for a .2 position. This will complete the need for the additional section of the second cohort that entered grade nine in 2017, 2018. Teachers and administrators will continue attending the Summer Institute, and there will be an emphasis on partner, partnering with guidance to increase college exposure for all students, including additional on-campus visits. Funding for the Summer Institute and the increased college exposure will be from the existing budget and we will, and will require no increase in funding. And then, I think that this is actually final for me. Summer School. Summer School Earth Science Prep Summer Course for eighth graders who passed the Earth Science class but did not successfully pass the Regents. If the students pass the August Regents, they will earn the one high school credit in science. A request, excuse me, a request to maintain the two sections of the College Bound Summer Institute. One section of students was grant-funded, and the grant is no longer available, so the additional funding will, would allow us to maintain the two sections for a total of 40 students. And then finally, the summer program is 20 days long. To maximize the 20 days for instruction, we are requesting additional funding so that the teachers can be compensated for proctoring and grading the August Regents outside of the 20-day program for instruction. And then I am now going to invite Deb Aargarden, the Assistant Superintendent for Special Education and Pupil Services.
So the Special Education and Pupil Services Department continues to build supports and services for children that align to the district's mission and vision of access for all students. Our goal is to provide academic and social-emotional services and programs that build on a student's strengths and ensure a successful educational experience. In preparation for the 2021 school year, we created a budget that proactively anticipates areas of need so that we can ensure the best possible outcomes for our students and families. In the area of special education, we continue to expand our integrated co-teaching services. Integrated Co-teaching, or ICT, is two teachers, a special education and general education teacher, sharing the responsibility for all children within their classroom. Next year at Ridgeway and Mamaroneck Avenue, we are adding the fifth grade integrated co-teaching positions. This addition will complete our K-12 continuum of ICT. Our teachers, staff, and administrators have done a tremendous job in rolling out integrated co-teaching, and the results for students have been immeasurable. This will require the addition of two special education teachers, a .2 at MAS, which is added to an already existing .8 position, and a 1.0 at Ridgeway that will be offset in the, in the following year by an anticipated closing of one of our self-contained sections. Regarding special education at the secondary level, our ICT program will be expanding at Eastview in Highlands to two sections of ICT, along with our consultant teacher and special class offerings. This is to prepare for the two cohorts that will be coming into Eastview in the 21-22 school year. In addition, we are expanding our capacity to provide specialized reading instruction grades six through eight. This will allow the district to continue to remediate any reading gaps that our students might still have before they move to White Plains High School. At White Plains High School, we continue to expand our integrated classes with the addition of ICT electives. The goal is for students to be able to access these electives without having to be in a special education self-contained setting. Not mentioned on this slide is an additional, is additional opportunities for students to explore vocational training. We're requesting an increase of our BOSI slots to 20 more BOSI slots to allow for our students to participate in occupational education and for the high school for no longer, the high school will no longer have to have students on a waiting list and turn students away. Another addition is the expansion of Strategies for Success. Strategies for Success was a pilot this year where two teachers support a group of students in the area of, areas of organization, academics, and Regents preparation. The two teachers have expertise in the four content areas: English, Social Studies, Math, and Science. This class has proven in most cases to be more effective than a traditional resource room setting in meeting students where they are and helping them access what they need. Pupil Services encompasses essential positions that help to meet the social and emotional needs of students. School counselors, or for us old folks, guidance counselors, psychologists, social workers, and speech teachers are just some of the positions that fall within pupil services. To continue to align to the state's social, emotional, and guidance learning standards, we continue to position White Plains to be at the forefront of proactive supports and services for students. To accomplish this, we are requesting an increase of a school counselor at both Highlands and Eastview. At Highlands, this addition will allow for each of the five teams to have the support of its own school counselor and will bring both buildings more in line with the median caseloads across Westchester County. In addition, we are seeking to add a social worker position at Highlands, which will allow for deeper social-emotional learning work surrounding trauma-informed schools, provide further support for the mentor program, and increase community outreach during the critical middle school years. Likewise, at White Plains High School, the addition of a social worker will allow for increased support of students and community outreach. As many of you are aware, the emotional needs of children continue to increase across the United States, and we, we propose these increases to allow our high school staff to continue to work around, excuse me, to continue their work around the emotional wellness of students. As always, we appreciate the support of the Board of Education and the community and are available to answer any questions.
Thank you both very much. Thank you, Dr. Hand, thank you, Ms. Aargarden. I also would like to, again, thank the Board of Education certainly for the time and attention that you put into the budget process, which, and the planning process, which is not a singular point in the year, it's really ongoing always, predicated off of our long-range plan. I also would like to thank our, our team, certainly in the business office, but in all the departments, as, as well as all of the stakeholders who participate in the information gathering that goes on here. I, I hope you're as proud as I am when you look at what the proposals are for our children all throughout the district. White Plains has a, a long and proud history of being completely student-centered. We have the ability to offer our children programming and opportunities that nobody, nobody can come close to. When you think about everything from the course offerings at the high school to the social-emotional work that's included in our long-range plan for both next year and, and years following, to the fact that, and again, spurned on by parents and community members who care deeply about our children, the fact that even our, our cafeteria and recess monitors are working toward professional development and curriculum so that in every aspect of our children's experience when they're with us, it can be a positive one. So, as we move, and there are going to be lots of opportunities for questions and conversations, certainly we are going to be presenting the budget as, in, in different iterations as we get more information related to the state side and state support. Just so that everybody knows, we do not intend, nor have we ever intended to exceed the tax cutting. It's important to get that out there early. And you saw, as Dr. Hand and Ms. Aargarden went through the instructional proposal, many of these increases in program are done through reallocation and redeployment of resources, resources that are currently in the budget, and that's a great thing. To have the flexibility to be able to do that, to grow and to change and to adapt where we need to each year to best serve our students, so we're really excited, and thank you very much again for, for your participation and your attention as we went through this evening. Lots on the calendar, please make sure, yeah, absolutely.
As a board member, I do want to express my appreciation also for all the thoughtfulness that goes into preparing these proposed budgets, you know, however it turns out sort of in the end, that we are very appreciative of really all the work that goes into this, and as you said, the student-centered approach where we're trying to provide our students with so many opportunities.
Yeah, and I, I would echo that. We ask a lot of questions, and the questions may not hit us until tomorrow or in the next few days, but we do call, we do email, we do email with, with a lot of questions, and, and we get the answers, and I have to say, you know, it's reciprocal, the thoughtfulness on both sides leads to the outcomes that we want for our students.
Thank you. Coming soon, PTA Council this Thursday, and, and thank you very much to our PTA Council executive members who organize. Senator Shelley Mayer will be meeting with the council and, and speaking to the council related to her vision for education throughout the state, particularly though in White Plains. And Senator Mayer's been a great friend to, to the district, and, and we're excited to have her. She's also, of course, the Chair of the Education Committee, so that's not all bad. We are, of course, not to forget, midwinter recess is coming up. I'm sure nobody's going to forget that. We hope you enjoy that time. We also have a special Board of Education meeting on the 24th, and that's going to be, the non-instructional proposed budget will be presented that evening. I, I do want to also, not up here, but I want to highlight and, and thank Leader Andrea Suer-Cousins and Senator Shelley Mayer for identifying White Plains High School as the focal point for this year's Black History Month meeting and, and celebration and really exploration. And on the 28th, the leader and the senator will be meeting with our children, our students are driving it, which is the best thing. Principal Doherty is always, you know, so quick to, to remind us, well, let's, let's ask the children, and we're, we're excited for that opportunity. That'll be on the 28th of February, and I believe it's the only spot that the leader will be working with, so more to come on that, we'll, we'll share with you, but of course, always proud of our children. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again for the presentations. Next, we'll move into our summary action items. We have summary action items, number four through eight, our summary action items. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, thank you. Item C, we are very grateful for the following donations. $600 from Friends of White Plains Public Schools for a grant for the girls' math recognition lunch at White Plains High School. Drawing paper from Kim Honig for the White Plains, I'm sorry, for the high school art department. A violin from Abby Goldman for White Plains High School. Clarinet from Sergio Flores from MAS. $50 from Fred Voss and Emily Kratzert, and $100 from Mr. and Mrs. John, oh boy, Collins, Tazopolis, Sepulis, thank you, apologies, for the Rich Leibson Journalism Scholarship. We are grateful. $2,500 from Ernestine Glenn for the E. Glenn Creative Writing Scholarship. $1,043 from various donors for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship. $100 from John Collins for the American Legion Post 135 Scholarship, and a flat-screen TV from Sarah Sanchez for Ed House. Thank you very much to all of those.
Is it going in your office?
It's not. I'm glad you asked that question. It is absolutely going in the staff room. Thank you very much to all of our generous donors.
Are there any questions, comments, or anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to the individual action items. We have the recommended approval of the Statement of Continued Eligibility Side Letter between the White Plains City School District and the White Plains Teachers Association, dated and effective February 10, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to, our next individual action item, we have the recommended support of the proclamation and efforts by the Moms Demand Action and White Plains PTA Council for the National Gun Violence Survivors Week. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Just a, a thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you, Mrs. Buck, and, and our PTA. The, this is the second year that the Board of Education has supported the resolution recognizing the proclamation, National Gun Violence Survivors Week. So thank you very much.
And thank you as, as well. I always get a text, I, I was not around this weekend really to do anything extra, but I always get the reminder to attend, and I do try to attend, and I'll let everyone know, I was very happy when you spoke the last time I attended. I was very proud.
I appreciate your support, Moms Demand Action. So appreciate the fact that you guys continue to support us and support them, and awareness in the school district and city.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our last summary action item is the recommended approval of the following policies: 6645, 6705, 6740, and 9170. And just for everyone's benefit, you know, we've been going through these, you know, for months now, to update them.
Years, yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. You know, so we've been, we've been going through them, and it's, it's, you know, it's a tedious effort, but it has to be done. And although that, that we're here or there, I mean, there could still be updates, and it's, it's an ongoing thing, but for right now, we're here, or maybe there. So may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
When do we start reviewing that?
Actually, Monday, we started.
And they're, they're online already, right?
They're going on.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and so they will be on our website as well. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we're going to go to Board Committee Reports. I can say we had curriculum committee meeting, and what you just saw.
And I went on to say.
Yeah, but you were still there in spirit. But what you saw tonight in the, the presentation from Dr. Hand was really what we discussed in depth, as well as follow-up, you know, emails and whatnot, Dr. Hand, so thank you for that.
And I'd probably add a couple of things to curriculum that I think are worth mentioning. So, Dr. Hand did a brief review of the meeting that was held at Southern Westchester BOSIs to discuss graduation requirements that the Board of Regents is going around now conducting these regional meetings. I had signed up to go and unfortunately got stuck at work, so I appreciated that you were there, and I think Sarah Hall was there as well. And if I can just read, basically, these meetings are around five guiding questions, and this is taking place at multiple meetings around the state. What do we want students to know and be able to do before they graduate? How do we want students to demonstrate such knowledge and skills? How do you measure learning and achievement to ensure that they are indicators of high school completion? How can measures of achievement accurately reflect the skills and knowledge of our special populations, such as students with disabilities and English-language learners? And what course requirements or examinations will ensure that students are prepared for college and career or civic engagement? And so for those of you out there who may not know, the, the Regents are considering different pathways now to graduation, and a Blue Ribbon Panel is going to be established, and there's going to be a lot of work around this. A number of states have adopted different pathways to graduation. And the only other thing I'll just mention also is that there was a, a brief presentation about paper versus computer testing, and that basically, SED, the, the State Education Department, has not found that there's really a disparity in the kinds of results they're getting, whether students end up doing their state testing via paper or, or via computers. We're piloting some of the computer-based testing.
Also, we had Human Resources, and that was a fruitful meeting. We can't discuss a lot about what happens, but thank you, and just so you know, we had the meeting, and it was fruitful.
We had our Finance Committee meeting just before this meeting, and we had a report by our Plains Auditor, and there was nothing exciting there, which is wonderful.
That's good.
And absolutely, and we had an excellent presentation by Frank on what's going on in terms of processes and facilities, and.
Which we'll see in two weeks.
Yes.
Here with the board.
Do we have any, anything else? So if we have nothing else, we're going to move to adjournment, and just to say hey to Church Street and Church Street Parents, too.
Got you out of here pretty early, too.
And to, and to thank.
Sorry, you forgot to mention the National Holiday and Country Gardens Friday. It won't be the one that we're going to.
That's right.
Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day.
And how did I, how did I blow that? And how did I, how did I blow that? I, I have the 100, 100-day project due on Thursday at my house. So now, now the tables are turned, right?
Well, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, so thank you, guys, for all you do for our children, and thanks to our wonderful parents who support us endlessly. We appreciate you as well. To John Shepherd, and is Ray still here with, and Ray O'Heda? And John Michavitz, hiding away. We thank you, guys, as usual, for being the dynamic trio and getting our, our meetings televised. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.